The order. Thank you, John. The.
First up is.
Want me to do the mayor call before we start?
Okay, the. First up is a roll call and seating of alternates, and I see all the commission members are here. And. All the alternates are here. Thank you very much, everybody for showing up tonight. Apparently, we. We did not confuse anybody because I see nobody is here, so I guess nobody was anticipating a public hearing on anything tonight. We got that a little bit out of sync. But hopefully, as we get down through things, we'll set a public hearing for next month. So Wayne and I both apologize for the confusion on that. We think we've got. Got it all going right now. The. Any additions or changes to the agenda? And I have none. So we will move on to public speak. Catherine Hutchinson, you have anything for us tonight? I think you're the only member of the public who's. With us.
Not at this time, and I realize there'll be another public speak at the end of the meeting. And if I have anything that I'll do it at that time. Thank you.
So. We'll move on to old business. First up is the application of Fitch Family Farm. And. Since the last meeting, based on the discussions at the meeting, Mr. Finch chose to withdraw his application. And. He is allowed to do that, so. That application is no longer valid. However, as part of the. List of various changes to the planning and zoning regulations that the town is looking at, we will include essentially the same. Draft regulation that we were talking about last month on behalf of the town. And when we get there, we'll talk about that. So that's what's going on with the agro tourism. So next up is the various changes to planning zoning. Zoning regulations and with that. Wayne, can you talk? So. Two months ago.
Well, right now, we're just looking at accepting that application, correct? Are we discussing the particulars?
We can discuss it. We can. And we can discuss it after the public hearing. But again, you know, our role in proposing regulation on town behalf is to have them at a good set, a good condition before we hold the public hearing, so they're sort of the way we want them to be. Then we answer any questions from the public or take input from them, and then we can deliberate on it. But we are allowed to. Talk about those tonight. In a similar manner to what two months ago, we talked about. I had a listing of changes that changed with defrontage for rear lots. Added garages for more than two mover vehicles in the lake zone by special permit. Eliminated reference to new construction homes in a floodplain. Deleted the minimum size house requirement because that's not legal in Connecticut. In section eleven point two, change with the fronted requirement, change front yard setbacks for open space lots from twenty to thirty feet due to setback being measured from the center line of the road. Change business adjacent to ARD front yard setback from ten to forty-five feet due to a setback being measured from the center line of the road, and we would not want to reduce setback next to a residential lot. Made all setback requirements for homes in the annual related district the same, removing the setback requirements for seasonal homes, as I no longer expect seasonal homes to be built. And eliminate the column listing floor area is minimum floor area no longer legal in Connecticut. We were also discussed at that point, changes to the kennel regulations so that we would require a special permit for even the smaller class A kennels in addition to class B and C. So we had talked about those. I wasn't gonna have. John put those up on the screen tonight. We will do, we will put it up on the screen when we have the public hearing to go through them in a little more detail, but I thought we had a good chance to talk about those at the time. And so. The couple of changes that are left are a change to section sixteen with the gravel bit read change to section twenty-two. And then we'll talk about the agro tourism draft break. So Wayne, if you want to just run us through what the changes to section sixteen are and why?
All right, I had an inquiry sometime ago, now probably six, eight weeks ago, from an individual who was. Asking about removal of gravel and whatnot, gravel from a site in conjunction with a building permit that had been issued. And it was hypothetical. They were just probing as near as I could tell. I did a little research and I found that some towns like Andover did permit the removal of gravel, topsoil, whatever, rock from sites as part of a building permit, and that's proven to be a problem for those towns because individuals would obtain a property that was site planned and get a building permit and essentially mine the property rather than. And Franklin had that issue, Canton had that issue. So I looked at the regulation and I thought it'd be a good idea to add a limit to the amount of material that can be removed in conjunction with the building permit, and anything over that amount would require a special permit. And I chose, I talked over with Eric, I threw it around, I put a number in there, five hundred yards, which sounds like a lot, but that's about twelve, fifteen, you know, triaxal loads of material. I'd leave it up to the commission to come up with the actual number. Good.
Is that just for residential or is that residential? And then is that, what if they were gonna build a building, how much, like say a ten thousand square foot building? Is that too much or not enough material to remove? Like, I'm just saying, like, if they were gonna do a regular?
Well, they heard a special permit process. They would abide what they're gonna do.
A special permit, not just a regular building permit?
Correct.
Okay, correct. All right. Thank you.
Well, building permit, but a special permit from zoning.
To excavate or to do that with a lot of material, right?
I think like East Hampton's had two or three cases where people are removing material for years.
Yeah. And sneaking around the requirement to get a special permit for an excavation site. And so we're trying to hit that off. And so the number that's currently in here is a thousand yards. Wayne said he's.
Well, the number in the current, there are no numbers in the current regulations.
Your current proposal, at least the one that I've got.
The one you have says a thousand, the one I have says five hundred, but I think the commission can back that around and come up with a number.
We were wanting to make sure that the number was big enough that somebody can go in, and if they're digging a basement or something, they can get the dirt out of there, not hit that with it. We're not trying to make it hard. We're just trying to eliminate the possibility, somebody gets creative and says, let me go run a mining excavation here. And I'll put up a little house and what'd you say, it was all incidental to building the house? So that's the basis on that one.
Okay, and then section twenty-two point zero point five. I had an email exchange with Attorney Brants on that, and that section.
Can you put that up on the screen, Wayne?
Oh, okay. John, you're gonna have to give me control.
All right, hang on.
That are control.
You should be able to.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right.
Wayne, if you need to, I can put it up. Just tell me which section to go to.
Tell you. For some reason, I can't get to.
Okay, we're in stride, John.
Twenty-two, yeah, all right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Jump in. All right, so this is, I think I saw a reference to twenty-two point zero point five. Is that right?
Yeah, correct. Well, on the website, I I have a fully fleshed out proposal.
Oh, okay, I can hear, let's.
Under our applications there, three Z.
Twenty-two, oh, I got you, okay. Okay, can you guys see that? Sorry, I'm gonna make it big.
Yeah.
So. And then this morning, I discovered the need for some conforming changes. So anything to do with section twenty-two point zero point five came about because of a actual motor vehicle statute that required motor vehicle, sales of motor vehicles to be run by the zoning board of appeals.
So if you scroll down to the bottom of that document, John, it'll fill the section twenty-two. The sections that.
Wayne, you gotta keep going all the way down to the bottom.
Oh, okay, I see it, yep.
Yeah, keep going.
Keep going.
Okay. Oh, you mean the bottom bottom?
Bottom bottom, right there. Yep, that's it.
So that's the existing twenty-two point zero point five. Tough to read because of the strikeout. But the way the process was, is if you're gonna sell, if you've been doing any of those things, not only do you need a special permit from zoning, then it goes to ZBA for them to weigh in on.
Which made no sense.
Which made no sense. The statute was changed. It was a state law. The statute was changed in twenty twenty-three. Attorney Brant says, get rid of it. It's not needed. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm doing. If you scroll back up. I made, I made, right here, stop, stop. I made some. Right, I added number four. This is in an industrial zone. Well, first I changed auto to motor vehicle. So then nobody said I'm selling trucks. And I changed motor vehicle gasoline sales to motor vehicle fuel. So. Covers anything you can put in a vehicle, make it go. Diesel, hydrogen, natural gas, propane, whatever.
Electric. Electricity, oh, maybe not for a commercial application, I guess.
Commercial application, yeah. I added motor vehicle storage facilities, which was in the ZBA regulation. And then I renumbered everything. If you scroll down. I changed lumbar to lumber. And and then right down at the bottom, I for grammatical for style, it's seventeen and eighteen. Seventeen period, eighteen period in list format. That's how that's how it is. So that's what I'm proposing for twenty-two point zero point five. All of these things here need to come to the zoning commission for a special permit. And under business, the only thing that is allowed in a business zone which is, which is up, John, up, which is section eight point one was gasoline sales. So motor vehicle sales, motor vehicle repair, all those things technically aren't allowed in a business zone by the current, by your current regulations. I didn't really mess with that except change gasoline to motor vehicle fuel.
And I think that makes sense. You know, we don't want, we want the business zone to be businessy in the industrial zone can do some other things like car repairs on it and stuff, but.
So that's what I got.
Yeah, so.
But this is all gonna come up when you schedule the special, the public hearing.
Any questions on the couple of things that Wayne talked about? And again, because, you know, we are not doing any deliberation here, all the alternates can ask questions just as well as any of the regular members, so feel free to ask away. Okay, there are none. The last item on the list is the agro tourism. And John, if you can, you'll put up, and if you display that, I know what's posted on the website doesn't have the markup with it. Your version did have that, and so if we can, you know, take a look at the markups and just go through what we changed from last time.
Is, so where would that be? Is it the draft, this one, the V four?
Up at the top.
I'm sorry, well.
Looking on that one you got there. I think that's got the markup set up.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like it, okay.
So is, we were going through this, and I guess just. I am, I'm pretty satisfied with where we are on this, and we'll talk about the sound limits again in just a minute. But since it's now the town's regulation and not Mr. Fitch's regulation, there's a couple of things that we could do. One of which is we could do what we've got displayed here now. Another option would be to not have any amplified sound outdoors. And another would be to not have non-agricultural accessory uses. There's, I know there's a lot of farms around that they have daytime events, you know. One that sounds like a Fitch farm is the Fish Farm over in Bolton, and they have, you know, a bunch of weekend activities that they do for the kids during the day and that kind of stuff, but. I can go. I can go with either of those options. What I don't want to have is everybody goes with this one because we started this out on Ryan Fitch's behalf, and then everybody said, well, gee whiz, I'd rather had no outdoor amplified music at all, but we never talked about that. And I think there's a couple of people in here that would like that, a couple of people in here that would like the outdoor music and happy with that. I just don't want to get to the point where we get into a public hearing and intercept, we have dissension among the commission here on what it is that we want to put forth. So anybody have any comments on that thought before we continue to look at this one here? Patrick? This is, you know, this is the time, you know.
Yeah, and I appreciate that we made a larger amount of work put in on this. And the whole intent was to promote the local business that's already trying something new, you know. But, you know, those other farms have daytime activities, and this is for like more like for the adults and something at night, and it is a tricky situation, you know.
Yeah.
And I thought that even though nine is, you know, earlier than the applicant wanted, that I thought that should fly, but now we're in a different position, and now if you're suggesting no amplified music at all, I mean, residents is like kind of sound like the, like Ryan, well, if anybody can have a party in their yard until ten o'clock at night. So I get, I get his point. And we all, I think we all agree, nobody wants sound ordinance because we got a lot of other stuff going on that people like not having sound ordinance in a way. We'll just fall back on the state as far as the seems like pretty rough guidelines there.
Yeah.
So. We're never gonna make everybody happy, and we also have to keep in mind protect people's property values and and why they moved to this town. So I mean, anybody else's thoughts on that? I mean, we, you know, we did have somebody that monitored the town's own gazebo, and we had eighty decimals across the street. So, I mean, it's pretty loud across the street at nine o'clock at night, you know, and then there's the whole breaking down and unloading and people getting in their cars, and I get that part of it, too.
Yeah. So I've been to several of the town concerts in the gazebo here, and certainly breaking down is not noisy evolution.
It's not normally noisy. Yeah, I think it's usually.
But it depends on how big. If you've got a carnival going, it might be a different, different thing.
Yeah, and we really never addressed the, you know, number of people that can show up that we just said, well, if whoever's applying has to say with how many people they expect, and we all knew that what was going on now is a smaller number of people, and that was pretty tolerable for most people, in my opinion.
Yeah.
But, you know, right, so I'm still for promoting the agro tourism and still allowing some amplified sound. It is tough to regulate, and I don't know if we have the resources to monitor that and stay on top of, oh, well, is it too loud or is it not too? Or we could we could do, I know, I think you mentioned like a trial basis for a year, and if it works out, great, and if not, then oh, can it, right? So I'm on board with that one for sure, and as all the work we did up till now, it still promotes some, you know, it's a, it's a pretty good compromise. Maybe not everybody's happy, but.
So. Yeah, I said I wanted to, you know, that's why I wanted to think about all this stuff, and there was a couple of things that that I thought of along that line, and and one is, you know, when the town holds a concert, they do maybe two or three a year. And by nine o'clock, making it a little loud, kind of like the beach, beach pointed one this year, but but that's different. We have to not we have to look at the regulation, not from what Ryan Fitch might do. But if you were to take it to the extreme of what our regulation allows, I can just envision somebody buying Yoman's Street Farm over on Lake Road in the Lake District.
Have big parties every weekend, yeah.
You know, to the max that we allow on this thing. And then we get old for the neighbors really quick, and I think it was Catherine Hutchinson that pointed out how many different you know, places we've got. So. And again, I said, I'm okay on this, you know, I kind of, I want to support the agro tourism too. I just think agro tourism should have more of an agro relation than I tried to think, what would we expect if somebody were coming up to set up an outdoor concert venue in town? I don't think that's what people of Andover are looking for. I went back and looked pretty hard through the plan of conservation and development. And it's, you know, we were looking for the tranquility and that kind of thing, so. So it is, it is a tough call and all we can do is our best, but I wanted to make sure we had time for conversation on that before we just put it out and then everybody said, well, Iowa saw that was a pretty dumb idea. Why do we do that anyhow? Don't want to hear about that after, or I want to hear about that now. So anybody else have thoughts on that?
Having a trial one year to see how it works with the current guidelines on amplified sound. I sort of like that idea.
And again, we have the right as a commission to regulate how many events somebody's happening, somebody's happened so that, you know, we don't get too far out of bounds, and we do have the opportunity to limit, you know, a lot of different things based on the location, so. There's no one size fits all. That's the beauty of the special permit. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say about that month tonight?
I'm good with the amplified music, well, so.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'm keeping it.
And hours? You like the nine o'clock? Ten o'clock is a little too late, you think? Or, I mean.
I think I'm just probably good in, you know, June or July.
Like the longest days?
I personally think nine o'clock is plenty late. I'd be happy with, you know, there's a lot of towns that do their concerts. Well, on Thursday night, they go six to eight.
I was gonna say, when the recommission does concerts at the gazebo, they're usually seven to nine. If it's in the fall, we might do five to seven or six to eight, but in the summer, we've done nine o'clock. And I would like to see this stay with, you know, a limit on the hours.
Then.
I think a lot of older people go to bed by nine. I mean.
I think they do. You know, if we had if ten o'clock were okay in the summer, we wouldn't have had anybody speaking against it. And and I was surprised there were several people that were, you know, and one of the things that I'll do different if anybody shows up at a public hearing is ask, what do you think an appropriate time is? So we get that input from the public, but when the concerts were going to ten o'clock, you know, a lot of people said were concerned about the noise. And going back and thinking about, I didn't know what that meant exactly, but I took it to be it's too loud and too late. Okay, so, you know, if we, and I think, Patrick, you said the state level was seventy dB?
Yeah, it changed from zone to zone, like from commercial to the residential, like if there were a butters, and there was different limits, and I think I saw that, but and then it depended, like next to an industrial or commercial zone, it was louder than the residential. So, and this is one of those cases where it's in a mixed use zone, and it should be it should be a deciding factor a little bit, you know, like he could decide that he wanted to put industrial there, and then he can be loud all day and not loud loud all night, but it could be producing noise all night, too. And, you know, that's to say that's right, but it is currently it's being used as a farm and, you know, these vets, but and business stores, but you know, I try to keep that in mind, too, so.
Yeah.
You also have to think of the traffic, you know, if people are wrapping up at nine versus ten, you have people hanging out after in and out of their cars or whatnot, so I think nine is late enough.
Okay, yeah.
Another thing is Route Six is pretty noisy all day, so people are looking forward.
But that's quite noise.
People are looking forward to winding down, you know, quieter, and so to them, it's taken away from that quiet time, you know.
Yeah, I came to Andover for quiet time, not playing to somebody else's music, and I'm not saying whether the music's good, bad, or whatever. If it's not your music, that's surely good music, so. If it's not your music, that's surely good music. So. And, and I do think it's different with the gazebo because we know it's only gonna be a couple of times a year. I think the town has the ability to well, this is agrotourism, right? What the gazebo is doing, certainly not falling under that, but we have the we could work that out if that gets to be problematic, but I'm not aware of anybody complaining about the concerts ending at eight or nine o'clock that we've been doing here.
Well, and I think I live next to the beach for a whole year, right next to.
It's close, you can get through it.
I was right next door. So I remember having that band over there and they were done by six o'clock or something like that. So it was, it wasn't that bad. It was during the daytime, we could build it.
Okay. So. That was a big thing. John, if you could go back to displaying that.
Sure. Um, so do you actually, I have, uh, Wayne sent me the sort of the clean version. Do you want me to bring that one up? As opposed to the markup?
I'd like to show, you know, what we did change last night. Refresh themselves.
All right, hang on.
Yeah, I don't think we changed anything on the first page.
No.
Coming down to the, the second page, we did yeah, go to, go to that paragraph high up there, you, you, just above the amplified sound thing. So we can show everybody how we we made it that simpler. Uh, events that don't include amplified sound. Not to give before nine or finish after ten. So, uh, so that, that makes sense to me. Next paragraph. I, I was you know, the thing I liked about the background level on my noise meter is I know how to go out and measure that to the state limits. We need to know what this, we need to be smart on that. So we're not just saying to an applicant, uh, show us how you're complying with the state limits because we don't understand how it works. We're, we're here to help an applicant. But I think that that would be fairly reasonable. Wrapping up by nine o'clock. Yeah. I, I think, I think it's the lateness more than the noise level, but hopefully we'll get some feedback on that, uh, you know, in the whole public here. So I'm good to go with the way paragraph hotel is up there right now. I think most folks are, it, you had nine o'clock cutoff time on Friday and Saturday and eight o'clock on the rest of the days. I'm good with that. So it, it sounds like most people were okay with that. Not perfect, but probably does good. Down in the site plan paragraph, we, we added words, including setup and take down, just so we, uh, we get a chance to make sure we're not taking down the carnival at three in the morning and making a bunch of noise out there doing that. In the very last comment that I had, that didn't get in there because I didn't catch it until I read it again, the last book, paragraph K, Health District approval, I'm sorry, John, go to last paragraph on the preceding page. Shall provide a copy of the approval to the with. So I think we just eliminate to the, and it goes to with the permit application.
Okay.
Now leave me there. Just eliminate to the.
Yeah, it's the PDF. Well, I can, I can like physically mark it off like.
I'll, I'll let you get that later on then.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. And then I don't know if fifty dollar annual renewals fee is the right number or not, but it can be there for the first go around and, you know, I think our town permit fees and that are, are too low. I think we need to jack up a little bit.
Why don't you change it then?
Seventy-five at least.
I think I don't know that we can change him. I think that's a Board of Selectmen approval thing. But we'll figure that out between now and next month when we bring it to, uh, you know, public hearing. Any other comments on the agrotourism regulation? I guess, John, I'll ask a question. Sometimes I see agrotourism spelled with an I and sometimes with an O.
Yeah, I'm the one that spells it with an I.
Okay.
Yeah, I would tend to spend it with, spell it with an I also because it's agriculture, not agriculture.
Okay, very good. Happy to leave it that way. Just, you know, someplace else I saw agrotourism, might have been in the P O C P chapter or something. I don't know.
That's, that's a, that's a much more aggressive form of agriculture.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so. Um, if, if.
What'd you say about the fifty dollar fee?
I think it should be higher.
Okay.
Yes.
And seven, someone says seventy-five?
Oh, I believe.
Hundred would be. Different special.
This is a business. You know, the guys out here trying to make money. We we can.
Should be at least as much as this deposit for the cake tap, right?
Used to be so, didn't I?
Probably two or three hundred. Fifty sound a little low too. So that's, that is all. Those are all of the regulation changes that I was looking at doing right now. And so I would make a motion that we schedule a public hearing to address all of those regulation changes that are November, prior to our regular November meeting, on November eighteen. I'll second that, John. Okay. Thanks, Scott. Then a call for vote, Ian.
Hi.
Scott? Patrick?
Hi.
Leeann?
Hi.
I vote high as well. Motion to hold public hearing passes by zero, zero. The next up is the plan of conservation and development.
Okay. So over the, if I, if I, I assume that's a open-ended, intra, intra, uh, opportunity to speak, Chad?
Yes. And, and I think, you know, going back to our original schedule, uh, that had October finalized draft and post-novice. So I think you know, we should be about finalized with the draft here. I don't know if you've gotten any comments at all. I'll go through three big picture thoughts I had, uh, looking through all that stuff again. But in our November meeting, it says, hope for discussion, public information. And I don't know. What's the difference between that and a public hearing?
Uh, well, the public hearing, we technically need to give everyone, um, sixty-five days, the, the clerk, the region, the selectman and the state, sixty-five days before the hearing opens. Um, so this could, it would just be a general information session to, you know, it's, it's not sort of the formal hearing, but you know, you could, you could let folks know that it's, it's an opportunity to ask questions or, or, you know, sort of before the official, before the official receipt and, and scheduling of the hearing. It's just another opportunity to talk about it under a slightly different name.
Okay, so might, might not be a long topic next November. We're really giving everybody their two months to, uh, do whatever the rest of the world wants to do. So do we need to? Do we need to schedule it? What do we need to do tonight so that we keep it on track, John?
Yeah, well, so, so, yeah, the, the thus far, Jed, the, the only additional comments that we got were your handwritten notes that you handed me off, uh, last week, I believe. And, uh, yeah, no, so I think, you know, if, if the, if the, um, planning zoning commission is, is comfortable with what they have received, what we could do is, you know, send out a we haven't sent everything out as a single unit and, and, you know, we can compile everything to a single plan with a, a cover sheet and that sort of thing. Um, again, not, not the final, final layout, which will have lots of photos and, and, you know, be kind of laid out a little bit more readably. But, you know, essentially the, 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 the chapters are in place, the substance is in place, the recommendations are there. So, you know, if, if you are comfortable as a commission that the, the documents that we've sent over the past month in, you know, in three or four chunks represents the, um, the draft that you want to present formally to the town. You can, you can, you know, pick a date, uh, at least sixty-five days from now and, and we can schedule our hearing. And we'll, and then we'll, we'll basically, Janil and I will, will assemble the, sort of the final, um, hearing document and forward that out to the, to the, um, entities that we need to send it to.
So if we were to do our planning and zoning meeting would be on December sixteenth.
Which is not quite sixty-five days.
Quite sixty-five days.
Yeah.
So.
You might be looking into early January, early January meeting.
And I guess we probably won't do it. So. So should we hold, so should we plan on a public hearing in January after the first of the year? Because that's the, that gives us our sixty-five days.
Yeah, I mean, that's, so that would be the January twentieth.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's perfectly reasonable. And, and, yeah, then what we'll do is we'll, we'll assemble it and, and send it around to the commission and to all the, you know, to the O P M, to the region and to, uh, the, the selectmen.
And we'll give them plenty of time, recognizing the, uh, the holiday season coming up and how that impacts a lot of things happening. But okay, so January twentieth will be the the public hearing on there. I had a couple of thoughts, you know, I mentioned I didn't really care for the way that the, the whole big chart of action items. You know, I was looking for the heavy hitters up front. I went back and I see why it is the way it is. All those, uh, soft actions came out of the introductory chapter. And so the introductory chapter is first, that means all those actions got on the whispers. Uh, and we didn't get to the heavy hitting stuff which comes after that. But so I think it's, it's the way that it should be and, uh, that's just the way it is. And, and so I'm happy with that listing, the way that is there. The if there was going back and thinking, and, and again, I'm looking for commission discussion here, if there was one thing that I would probably eliminate from the P O C D, it's in the complete streets chapter, it's the, uh, pushing forward for roundabouts. You know, I look at the intersection of Lakeside Drive and Lake Road and, uh, you know, rarely are there two vehicles at once in that area. And I look at the, the small area there. I, I don't know if that's what Handover needs to be working on right now, putting in roundabouts. What's everybody else think?
Yeah, Route Six.
Okay, I want thumbs down. Yeah.
I, I know that the, one of the spots was Hendy and Long Hill Road. There is a lot of traffic going through there. And it's often like who goes next kind of thing. So it might make sense there.
Okay, maybe, uh, the problem there is the, the grades are all bad, terrible grades in there.
Yeah.
There's about a ten foot drop.
Yeah, hard to put a roundabout on a hill to put a roundabout in you. Side hill like that. That's big construction.
Yes, that's, that's the long hill.
Yeah, sorry. Just noticed that myself. Um, yeah, but so this is, this is the only, this is the only real reference to roundabouts in the, in the chapter is, is consider. And, you know, to, to be honest with you, it's it's, you know, this is classic P O C D vague wording. Um, so it's consider roundabouts, um, which is actually, you know, kind of what you're doing right now. So you, you have already fulfilled this goal, but, um, yeah, it, it's, this, this doesn't say anything as strong as, you know, seek implementation of or seek funding, but it's just consider. It's really, yeah.
You remember back when we had the, uh, survey of the citizens?
Yes, sir.
Then there were many probably driven by one person in particular. Your people commenting on that not in favor of roundabouts. I didn't see any surveys, but I saw one that said that we should consider roundabouts in, uh.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So if, if we as a commission aren't keen on the idea and we've already considered them and thinking maybe it doesn't make sense. I just assume get it out of there so we don't confuse everybody else with what are we going to be doing with this? Uh, you know, we've got bigger fish to fry than roundabouts, which I don't think we got money or room.
Yeah, well, the only, so the only, the only downside of taking that out um, is, is should you, you know, some, some future version of this commission or the Board of Selectmen or the town manager? Um, and, and CROG decide that that is actually the right solution? Um, having a reference to it in the plan is useful for funding purposes, but, but again, if, if, you know, this is, this is your plan, if you're confident that this is not an issue that you want to tackle. Fine, we can, we can certainly take it out.
I.
I don't see it, I don't see it. I don't see the reason why you're going to keep it in there anymore, but I don't know how much treatment it's gonna if anything, put a roundabout on Route.
With Merritt leaving, you can bet there's nobody, be pushed on a roundabout.
And Merritt Valley is spelled.
Yeah. So I guess I would propose that we eliminate the reference to roundabouts. I'll leave then moving public works over to the transfer station. But I think that's as much, that's as quiet as I can do. Patrick's not listening to me.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I apologize.
I'm trying to make fun of you, Patrick. Public works going over there, maybe what I did, you don't need to listen.
I was asking for a ramp there so that if they go too fast, I'll just walk and I can watch along and then my stop sign.
Yeah, okay, fair.
Sorry.
Did you hear that? Um, are, oh, are we getting rid of it?
Getting rid of roundabouts.
Okay, then it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I, we could, I mean, also, Jed, we could also just, you know, if you want to rephrase it, we want to keep, continue a focus on these problematic intersections or conflict points, we could just rephrase this to, you know, uh, actively seek, you know, reasonable traffic calming or, or intersection improvements or something like that.
I'm okay with that. I just.
Okay, sure.
Think about, you know, I like roundabouts where there's a need for a roundabout, where there's heavy traffic. We just, I don't see it. And.
Well, Lake Road is pretty heavy. But there's no room. There's no room. Yeah, no, that, they're, and then, yeah, you're right.
And if you, in item four, if you didn't hear John, is Merritt is, is Merritt Valley Road.
Merritt, yeah.
Merritt Valley.
M E R.
M E R I T T.
Double R, double T.
Yep.
That was one issue. The next issue that I tried to, you know, come up with in my mind, what are the, you know, three heavy hitters for me that I was looking at getting here? And certainly with, with Eric leaving, um, I think it is imperative that we keep the town planner, you know, and the action item in there right now is to expand John's role. Imperative that we keep the town planner, you know, and the action item in there right now is to expand John's role to encompass economic development. Um, somebody could build a case that, oh, P O C D is done now, we don't need to uh, have this here.
That's what happened last time, kind of.
Yeah.
And, and it's usually dependent on how much money the board of selectmen is willing to even think about sending the board of finance to do it.
I think in P O C D, that is completely responsible for the board.
Okay, yep, so my thought is, John, we beef up the words about the town planner there, um, I would like, so one of the things that. I'm not doing as well as I would always hope to is handling the admin associated with all these regulation changes. And I've always, you know, wanted to keep a tight brain on who has that because I didn't want, I wanted. To know what was going on with them and that sort of thing, but I think, I don't know if that's something that you could uh. Take on in the town planning role, once we get the P O C D behind us, um, but it would certainly make. The role of the planning and zoning chair.
Hmm.
Better if, you know, we didn't have a volunteer trying to manage the uh, um.
Oh, yeah, the foot, like the official version of the regs and all that, all that, and it's, oh, of course, of course.
Okay, you got it, put that in there is uh, something you need to pick up.
Okay, uh, let me, let me just see if that's the right place to put it, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm gonna.
Yeah.
Uh.
But I think that's, that's my number one action item, is to ensure that we keep you and we expand your role, not diminish.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do the students here and. Something like that.
Yep.
Okay.
Cause we've got a bunch of, but there's a bunch of regulation changes that are gonna come out of this. Um, and. That's gonna be uh, you know, fairly uh. Completion of the P O C D is only getting us to the starting line, not taking off on a bunch of stuff.
Right.
And, and so we need to, to uh, share that and uh. Ann and Scott, who are the, you know, the uh, board of selectmen, when we talk about that and uh. I imagine that I will have to go and I would hope that Elaine would again with me, you know. Uh, when we first brought John on, Elaine and I both presented uh, some information to uh, the board of finance and the board of selectmen and uh. Um. But I'm here to tell you, there's a lot of work being planned zoning here and uh. It, it would behoove us to provide a little assistance there. The other two, two uh, you know, the next. High priority in my mind was. To finish the work that we started on that zoning map, you know, we spent a lot of effort. Trying to figure out where we stand now with the, with the zoning map. And we got uh, you know, we heard Hank talking about. We did this last time, then we got the P O C D done, and then we dropped the ball and didn't do anything with it. And he'd really like to sit down with economic development, planning, zoning, conservation, and we figure out, you know, where. Where the best use of uh, of the town property is, and so I think bringing that map to fruition is a, a high priority item.
And if I may to add to that, like, yes, Anne, uh, we really need to nail down the spots that the, you know, are. Uh. And the conservation commission would advise against this development, or, you know, that's, that's our biggest hurdle, as far as I can see.
Yeah, but not just industrial, we're.
Well, then, you know, we, we're still a mishmash of stuff right now, and we haven't really clearly defined it enough to say this is great here and this is great there and.
Yep.
Well, so, yeah, I, I mean, that's, that's actually what, if, if the town, that, that might be like the single. Missing component of this proposed planet conservation and development. As it stands right now is, um, and I was just gonna ask Janil about this, um. We can put together a future land use map, um, which, you know, will, will up. Attempt to, to, to parse those, those areas of conservation and those areas of development, I think the trick being. Most of the Route Six corridor is, we're going to have to consider it a, a balanced growth area or something like that, you know. Uh, but yeah, we, that's something that we haven't shown you visually yet, is, is, you know, sort of a, an attempted uh, future land use map.
But I was, I was surprised. How much time we've spent working on that map already, and we haven't even gotten it to the point where we could call it. Our official zoning map, because it's still not completely accurate.
Hmm.
So that's a, that's a big one, then the last one is uh, you know, the affordable housing thing, and I think that you focus on. The fifty-five plus, uh, back in the day, we used to have starter homes, we don't build starter homes anymore, that, that wasn't the affordable housing plan. Uh, but um. Not having, you know, Eric was always a, a strong component of, but, you know, what planning and zoning was trying to do and uh. I'm not sure how, you know, the board of selectmen are gonna be. Receptive to uh, you know, finding that person who is gonna get fired up, take that ball and run with it, and. Uh, I think to make any of it happen, we're gonna have to give up some town property to uh, sweeten the pot to get that guy over here. I think, you know, we've got significant drawbacks by not having the public water, public sewer, um, and that kind of stuff. But we can change our rigs to make it a little more uh. Biable, but I do think, you know, for the start, if we were to get a fifty-five plus immunity in here. Uh, because we do have an aging population in, in there, so.
So how, how can we get this going then?
How do we get this going? Um.
Yeah.
First, we have to get. Four hours?
Four hours for John?
Um, maybe, first thing we have, we have to go to the board of selectmen and see whether or not you're there in favor. And so my, my thought is, the board of selectmen has to buy in on this plan. And we get their head nod, yep, we're, we're in agreement with that, when uh, when we sell them on, on this plan here.
So I'm, I'm highlighting Jed, there, so already in the plan is a couple of action items, so we.
Yeah, there are.
We talked about actively rezoning the, the targeted properties that are listed in the affordable housing plan. Um, that, that allows for some incentive housing as of right, and then after that, that proactive rezoning. To then, you know, look, uh, look with the, um, well, we recommend creating an affordable housing committee, but also planning and zoning and the town. To work with developers, um, who would be interested in assisting that process, so that, that, it's kind of, you know, some of those steps are laid out there. And um, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I agree with the steps, I just, you know, when uh. When I started trying to, you know, in, in my mind, would, if somebody said, well, what are your three top things? Okay, well, you know, those might not be the best ones, but. At least there's, there's a start, and uh, and we need, and we need the board of selectmen to uh. Greenlight that they feel, you know, that we have to sell the citizen the town to give that property away to a developer, so. There's, there's some steps there, but uh. That's probably the, the hardest one of the bunch to uh, to get, but uh. I think that probably the biggest uh, issue out there for us right this minute too.
Maybe our next meeting, we should come up with a plan, all of us, how to. Bring this forward to what is left, and so they understand that.
Yep, okay, then, yes, um, cause that, it is gonna take that, and um, I don't know. If everybody's, if the, you know, board of selectmen are all. Unfavored in favor of that or not, but honestly, but. I'm hoping that two of you for planning zoning, that, you know, I haven't heard anything, I haven't heard either of you two say anything untoward towards uh. That, so I think, you know, I'm assuming that you're okay with proceeding down that path.
I am, I'd like to see it happen, yeah. And we, we, in uh, economic development, we've also discussed hiring of, of one of the developers who talked, who I talked about, we, we've been in contact with a few of them. And uh, that we would need to hire them to spend the time on it, you know, it's not like they're gonna consult and advise us for free. Uh, unless it's like their property and they're doing all the permits and all the, you know, but. Um, that, that's available also, but that would be a slight expenditure on some hours for that assistance also.
Okay, yeah, we, it's connected before the plan.
I just wanna bring it up so we don't forget about it.
Good idea, maybe.
Heber must have already done it, so.
They got land on?
And they have, they. Plant, well, the church gave them land, I guess.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, but that's affordable housing, we were talking.
And, yeah, so they, they also have the advantage of being right on sewer and water lines.
True, and also. No, it's not.
Yeah, it's not down for a bit, yeah, I got you. Okay, but you go to remind three big hitters, I don't know if anybody's got any other thoughts on things that uh. You know, you think are key in this thing that. When we, we hold our public hearing and we're briefing the, the public on this thing, yeah.
So the next time you, you, we get together, John, you'd have for us the new state statutes and how they're pushing us to do the affordable housing.
Yeah, uh, it's possible that the, the, the legislature will hold a special session in advance of your November meeting. Um, we'll see, I mean, you know, this was supposed to be a September session and then it was supposed to be an October session, and then now it's a November session, so. Uh, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't place any heavy bets on it, but it's, yeah, it's possible, we could, we could have some different guidelines next month.
Question for you, uh, we're, we're not lobbying for any of this stuff, right, as a town?
Um.
Not, as far as I know, not directly, uh, you know, the town is part of both C C M, which is the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, and COST, which is the Council of Small Towns. Um, uh, you know, tho- those, those two municipal organizations lobby on behalf of municipalities, but. Uh, I, I don't believe that, I, and yeah, I don't believe that Eric or any of the selectmen have directly submitted any, any uh, testimony.
Right, no, yeah, that, that shouldn't be.
Yeah, um, but you would think that. There's gotta be grant money or something out there to do what Patrick was talking about, uh, you know, that, there is, yeah, it, it should be easy to get ahold of them, they should be. They should be coming to us saying, what can we do to uh, help you go down this?
But you also have to be careful with the clause of the grant, so we, we really have to understand.
Yeah.
What that is, right? Um, except fifty-five and over is great, I think the town needs it, affordable housing. I don't think we need it, I don't think the town needs it here, I'm not, I'm not for it for sure, and that the state cannot push us to do it, it's not a law. The law always says that we need to loosen up some of the things, if we provide a plan to invite, you know, developers. Just makes it easy for them a little bit, but there's no law saying we have to have affordable housing.
It's actually not the case, uh, Andres, the, both, both, both uh, eight dash two, eight dash twenty-three and the Fair Housing Act, federal. Uh, state that the town has to make provision for affordable housing.
They have to make provisions to loosen up the laws, there's no law saying that we have to have affordable housing plan in place to, to, for, for developers to come and do it. If you don't invite. What?
Section, section uh. Eight dash thirty J does say that the, the town needs to have.
Into it, there's no law saying that we have to have affordable housing anywhere.
Perhaps you're not looking in the right place, I'll send you links.
Send it to me, I'll, I'll look at it with her.
So there was a law that we had to come up with in portable housing plan, and.
That's called a thirty J, that's a law.
Law of, where's that law?
It's a, it's a sta-, it's a state statute, which is a law.
Eight thirty J.
Eight thirty Js, huh? All right, well, just send it to me, because we looked into it and there's, we didn't find any law by the state. That says you guys have to have a plan or, or you have to have affordable housing. There's, there's a law saying, or statute saying that you have to, uh, if you have a plan, then you can loosen up some of the regulations. Like with parking and so on and so forth, but other than that. Uh, if you wanna send me some supporting documents and, you know, I'd like to look at it, um, but.
I think there's a.
There, yeah, that's, I, I don't wanna get into it, yeah, here right now, because uh. I couldn't, I certainly was thinking that we had to come up with a plan, or a plan was to tell the state how we're getting to our ten percent.
Nice. Um, we've, okay, I'll, I'll, I'm, I'm gonna do more research, I'm pretty sure we'll have to have a plan.
Okay, well, I, I don't have a plan.
But I, you know, there's, that, you know, there's no law that says we have to have a portable, uh, affordable housing plan.
I'll put it, I'll put it on the screen right now, Andres.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, John, send it to me on an email, I don't wanna, this, you're right, I don't wanna waste time, but. I, I'd like to understand and look at it, and look at all the facts, and my wife and I will look into it, she's a lawyer, she knows what she's doing.
So if, if we're doing a public hearing in January.
Yeah.
I would think that before we have a public hearing, we would. Run through what we're gonna say in public hearing with the commission. And John, would that be something we maybe do with the December meeting, or is that uh?
A two, I'm sorry, to uh, have a, uh, in December, have, have a presentation just to the commission or the commission and board of selectmen, or how do you?
Um, well, I don't know, and I guess part of the plan that Scott was talking about, maybe uh. Maybe you and I, John, are gonna have to sit down and, and figure out, you know. Who, who should sit down and come up with, with this plan ought to be, so we've got a starting point for discussion amongst the commission here.
Yeah, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm getting confused about how you're using plan, do, do you mean how we, how we. Like, what's our, what's our plan of attack to implement this stuff, or what's, what's the, the plan, the, the?
Improve the plan, to improve our P O C D.
Yeah.
We were just talking about, we need to have uh, a strategy on what we're gonna tell, go tell the selectmen, so that we can get them on board.
Hmm.
And, and that could be, so we've got. You know, we've got an November meeting, which is open discussion, public information, we got the December meeting, we'll have the public hearing in January now. So there's, there's gotta be some steps that. Get us to the point where we're in a public hearing, the board of selectmen said, no, we're not doing that. I wanna avoid that part.
And it's fifty-five and over, you're talking about, yeah.
So I, you know, the, yeah, I, there's, there's a couple of ways we can, well, yeah, I, it's, it's, again, again, Jed, I'm not sure what, if you're talking about. The, the plan to present the plan or.
Yeah, no, the whole thing, I, you know, in uh. I like the Stephen Covey book, Seven Habits, uh, you know, and the last one is begin with the end in mind. So on January twentieth, I'd like everybody to say, yep, that's a good plan, yep. Uh, board of selectmen are all in fever of providing either of these two town properties to sweeten the pot, to make some of that happen. Um, and uh, but it's gonna take a little work to get there. And uh, and we need to know, we, you know, we've got, we've got the document written. And we had a little plan to get the document written, it was a good plan, and we executed the plan, now you gotta get, how do we get approval for the plan, which. If uh, unless we, we look at that a little bit, um. It might not be smoothie as we want to get to, unless we uh, are proactive and uh.
So I would, I would.
The board of selectmen.
I would, I would defer to you guys on the right approach to that, uh, you know, ideally. The, you know, the, the public hearing, the January public hearing is the opportunity for everyone to have their, have their say altogether about the plan. That said, we give, we give the, the selectmen, um, as, as, as well as the state and the region, you know, two months essentially to review the draft. If you would like, if it makes sense to go to them in, in December. Uh, to the board of selectmen meeting and do a little bit of a song and dance to talk about what the, what the plan is. Uh, to the Board of Selectmen meeting and do a little bit of a song and dance to talk about what the, what the plan is. And, and to, you know, do some presentation on its recommendations and, and suggest that if they have, you know, comments and would like to. Participate in the, in the big process. It's, you know, January twentieth. But, you know, do a little introductory presentation to the selectmen. That's certainly, that's certainly something we could do.
Tell us me like what you're asking for is to get that feedback before the January meeting.
I just, I don't wanna get too, you know, bring the public in here and the Board of Selectmen, uh, you know. We are surprised that they're not in favor of the direction we were marching off to go. That shouldn't be the first time that, that they are exposed to this thing.
I, well, I was here for the last time and the, the, we submitted the plan of conservation development. So what, what happened last time and how. I understand how the process works is all this work that all the commissions did. That are appointed and volunteer and the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is elected. And all the people that helped them and the, our planner. Everybody involved comes what came up with this plan and it, and sometimes it's not, there's parts that people don't like and. But we've taken the surveys and so up to this point, we have the draft. Once the draft is complete and the planning and zoning votes. Gay or nay, this is our plan to submit. Then it, the Board of Selectmen, as far as to my understanding. It's their job as elected officials to try and follow this plan and like, like the way, uh. The way that John has had these action items, it's up to their discretion as they, as they are elected officials. To represent the whole town a- as our board of governors, right? To implement as they see fit. Within the means and possibilities of this time. So it's kinda like a multi-step process so that at this point now we have the draft. Pretty close. And then if you wanna submit to them for review, that's great, but really what we vote on is that, that's the, that's the plan. Now. We look back at the last plan of conservation and development. There was a lot of conservation and almost no development, right? So that's why I, I was glad to get back on B B C to help push forward. The things that people really wanna see in our town, not focus on that. And we think we did a pretty good job on trying to address that stuff. But the stuff we don't really care for or don't think is gonna fit in our town, we did not focus on that. So. At this point, that's the last time it happened that the, the public meeting is just to inform of everybody. Of what their volunteers and elected officials have come up with. This is the plan. We're gonna do the best we can with it. And then it's up to the Board of Selectmen or town manager to implement that as, as they see fit and within the means of the power. So I know some of these action items are really, really expensive. And that's why John prioritized them on, these are the small potatoes and these are the, they're big ideas, right? And then we'll see what happens. Uh, that's kinda like.
Okay, so the Board of Selectmen don't approve it?
I, from my knowledge.
No, it's, it's exclusively the domain of the planning commission. So we don't, we don't need their votes, except insofar as you've got members of the Board of Selectmen on your commission. But yeah, it's, um, you, you don't need the Board of Selectmen votes.
Yeah, so we're, we're really close. Yeah, that is, yeah, that's a requirement if.
And that's, and that's, well, yeah, it, it's, it's also something that we can, we can discuss, that it's really a matter of prioritizing stuff. You know, to be done within available. Allocations, but yeah, no, I think if there, if there are special projects you need us to design something, that's different, but. You know, as long as we're taking things sort of step by step, you know, writing some grants, working on some regulations, working with developers. It's stuff that we can do within, within the scope of our ongoing service to the town.
Okay, so before the next meeting, John, you and I will get together so that I have a better understanding.
Of course.
So, uh, I can help facilitate the process as opposed to hinder it.
You're not.
Any other? Comment on B O C D while we're here? I think I hear somebody coming through very softly, Anne.
Oh, is that any better?
There we go, yeah.
Okay. Um, I think a little while ago, I'm not sure what the heading of the document was. Um, I think there were a couple of, um, items or, or maybe one action items with two. Um, items under it that talked about making Island Street and Cider Mill Road one-way streets. And I'm sure we're gonna revisit all this again. I was just wondering right now, um. If that was prompted by something or it was just, you know, someone's opinion that it might be. You know, if there's been incidents at either, you know, either one or both places.
That, so yeah, that's in the, that's in the complete streets chapter. I'll put it up on the screen. Cider Mill, I, I, I can't speak to Island Street on what the impetus of that was, but Cider Mill was proposed as part of, that's right here. Um, as part of the multi, the, the multimodal, um, path between Town Hall Campus. And, uh, Route Six and the, and the Hop River Trail. That Cider Mill Road being, you know, extremely low traffic. I think there's probably four or five houses on it. And, uh, it being, um. Uh, you know, it would, like, using Cider Mill as essentially a one-way shared street for its, you know, vehicles, cars and bicycles. Would, uh, allow the town and, and people to, uh, finish that path from the Town Hall to the Hop River Trail. Um, safely and relatively inexpensively without, you know, having a major disruption on. Uh, you know, traffic safety and that sort of thing. So it, it was sort of part of that connectivity plan.
A bike path?
Yeah, that, so instead of, instead of doing a separate, um, you know, twelve-foot or ten-foot wide paved pathway. You would essentially use, use the existing width of Cider Mill Road, you know, to have a one-way car lane and a, and then a, a, a. Um, a bike pedestrian, uh, lane as well.
Okay, thanks.
I couldn't speak to Island Street. I'm not, I, I don't know the details of that.
Follow the streets to one way, I, uh, you know, as you say, there's maybe four cars a day that drive on Cider Mill Road. I would think the chance of a bike. Seeing one is a ride down there.
And we could consider changing the speed limit until like ten miles an hour on that road is so short. Stuff like that or, you know, consider.
There are other, there are other ways of, of, you know, and, and that we can do stuff with pavement markings and, and other things, uh, to, to, you know. Avoid going fully one way, but you know, it's, it's rec- it's sort of identified as a, a key connecting. Uh, link in, in the multimodal, you know, travel chain. Jargony.
Anything else, Leanne?
Is what?
Any, did you have any other comments? That was a good one.
No, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else on the B O C D? Okay, we'll move on to new business, which I think we have none. Next up is, uh, correspondence. Wayne, anything I can add?
I have nothing.
Okay. We're gonna move on to commission discussion. And Wayne sent out a little, uh, thing from our bylaws talking about election of officers. Which could happen as early as next meeting. We have the election in early November. We changed the bylaws to say. At which time officers will be elected, let's say, following the collection and seating of members. So we have to get the. Those members who are elected sworn in. And then we can hold elections and it sounds like all of the officers need to be here for us to have that election. So. That would be there. And I, uh. I guess I can go on record as saying that I would, uh, I am hoping that somebody else is gonna step up to say, woo. I'd like to run the planning and zoning commission for a while. So. Think about that for the next one, too. Cause I've had my fun, had my time. My bird. Somebody else maybe. Run with that purge for a little bit.
No, the, just for my benefit, uh. After the election and the results are out. And. Any changes to the, uh, to the commission, those people have to be sworn in and then they become members.
Yeah.
At that point. And they, if that happens before the November meeting.
We can hold election at the November meeting.
Hold election.
If it doesn't, you know, there could be a runoff. And that takes a little while sometimes, we've seen.
Right, but they don't have to be sworn in.
Town clerk would. There are four votes between, uh, oh. Was it? I can't remember now. Yeah, it was, uh, yeah.
Town clerk would have, would have to swear them in and, you know, the minority representation, if those issues pop up, they would have to be. So before that meeting.
We'll be, we'll be addressing that at the November meeting. Any other comments for commission discussion at this point? And I guess the last thing I thought about there, you know, and, uh. I was kinda hoping Eric would show up here tonight, but I certainly am gonna miss Eric's support. Doing all the planning, the zoning stuff, but I think he, he supported all the, uh, the commissions just like he did here, but, uh. He's certainly been a mentor to me and, uh. And was always very supportive of what planning and zoning wanted to do and, uh, I'm gonna miss that guy, so.
Me too.
Yeah. Administrative report, zoning agent, Wayne?
Not too much, uh. I met with, uh, a. Architect, uh, that's working on what is now two eighty Route Six, which is. That lot between Wales Road and Shoddy Mill. I think I told you guys about that last time that they were in yesterday. Uh, with a preliminary site plan for me to look over.
And that's for building a house?
For building a residence there, yes. That, that was a six-lot San Martino subdivision that was approved. In a business zone in nineteen ninety-four. And that's the last lot of that six-lot subdivision. So, uh, the questions arose about, uh. The common drive that's there. Uh, there's two lots that are served by a common drive. And this lot. Connects to the apron of that common drive. Where it's on Route Six. And the. There was questions about, you know, can we? Can we move our driveway and, um. Basically, my answer to that was you'd have to, you'd have to get the planning and zoning commission to, um.
He wants to move it off the common driveway and onto Route Six?
No, he wants to move it from the apron. That's there. Up the driveway, so it's to the common driveway at a perpendicular angle part of the road. Which kinda makes sense, but, but that's, but that's not what was approved in nineteen ninety-four.
Will don our regulations?
Our regulations, so. So the, my answer to, to them was that they can come to the commission. And request a change to that subdivision. Then, and they would have to, uh, get a new, um, a new easement. Because there will be three, three residences served by that common drive if, if they do that, which the commission. Has to waive the two. In, in the subdivision regulations.
They can waive it. We can't waive it.
Uh, actually, there is a section of subdivision that says you can in the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, but it's not, well, I'll, I'll look, but I thought the, the driveway requirements in our zoning regs.
Uh, there's driveway requirements in the zoning regs, there's driveways in the subdivision regs.
Isn't it just easier just to bring it out of the apron?
That's what I told these guys, that it would be very difficult to accomplish what they want to accomplish if they could. E- even if it could happen. And then there was another. Question about common drives and this is, sounds like it's come, gonna come before the commission, maybe in November. Spoke with engineer Mark, Mark, is it Mark Reynolds? Yeah, Mark Reynolds. Uh, who's working on an open space subdivision. In town. In an, at an undisclosed location. But the question was about common drives in an open space subdivision. I told him to bring the, bring, bring his ideas to the commission in, for an in- informal.
So this would be an informal presentation?
For an informal presentation.
What's, Wayne, what's our current policy regarding shared drives?
Uh, currently, like I said, in, it's a, a shared drive can service two residences. Except, like I said, there's a, there is a section in the subdivision regulations where that can be waived. For a subdivision, a proposed subdivision.
So you mean, so it could be, it could serve more than two, you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, section, I have it right here. In the subdivision. Uh, subdivision regulation. Seven point seven. Number ten. And the very first paragraph in regulations, subdivision regulations in seven point seven. The very last line of the opening statement says the commission can waive any of, any of those items in seven.
Right, there's a, yeah, there's a blanket waiver provision that, that subdivision regulations are allowed to have. Okay.
Now, otherwise, common drives, uh. Are for two, two residences. Uh, there is words in the stormwater section about common driveways for three or more. Have to have a stormwater, stormwater management plan.
They make three of word, you're talking about private road.
No, that, the words, common drive, a common drive.
Yeah.
That services. More than two dwellings. That's what it says.
No, the, well, the, the, the regulation at the end there says common drives may be allowed provided the driveway serves no more than two dwellings.
Right. Right, so that, those are words I'm familiar with.
And, and but that's, but what you're, so it's.
Uh, no, yeah, that, right there. Uh, right, but, uh, if you go back to the beginning, like you said, that would be waived.
Sure, sure, okay.
If you go to page fif- page fifty of the zoning regulations. Which is the. Which is the stormwater management section. But that has to do with stormwater, so.
Where are you?
Where am I? Uh, hold it, so slow down, you go too fast.
Sorry. Oh, there we go. Any project involving new road or common driveway serving three or more?
So.
Well, yeah, that doesn't, I, I wouldn't say that necessarily. Explicitly permits a common driveway serving three or more. It would just be.
Extended each stormwater management.
If a road. Or if you have, yeah, if you have a road. Yeah, I suppose, yeah, so, yeah, we should, yeah, it's, it's probably good to be a little bit clearer.
And four point four C, that's where you get to the two.
In, in subdivision or in, in zoning?
No, in the, in the regulations, sir.
Four point four C?
Yeah.
No, it's not that.
Before, four point nine point four.
Oh, okay. Rear lots, four point nine point four.
Yeah.
Right here, driveways.
And if you go down to C.
Uh, yeah, so construction of a, may grant special permit. Construction of a common driveway to a maximum of two adjacent. So to, that, that, so it's not clear whether that would also include. The, the front lot, you know, serving a front lot that, that those, those two rear lots are behind.
And in the case of this two eighty Route Six. And in the case of this two eighty Route Six, every lot has frontage.
Uh huh.
So. Well. I judge just throw it back at them with their engineers and architects and stuff.
And they must be reading the same thing.
Come, come up with a. Something and then. If they put something in writing, then we all should just look at that.
And we'll look at what they have to say first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's plenty. Anything else, Wayne?
No, plenty.
Well, as the inland wetland water quarters agent, uh. Rep, uh, got nothing to report at this point in time. So now we're back to you, John.
Um, I don't think I have anything further. I, I just, you know, with, with Eric's pending departure, um. We're gonna meet uh before, you know, again, before he leaves, um, to make sure that all of, any, any projects that need my involvement. Um, are, are just, you know, that I, that I know who to talk to, where, where the status of the contract is and that sort of thing. We just need to finalize those. Those elements. Um, but yeah, I, I'm. Nothing further for me.
Okay. So Wayne, was that our open space subdivision?
Yeah, that's what they're proposing, an open space subdivision. Basically, plus, across third, close.
Oh, we interested in them.
Yeah, cause that was put in the last plan of conservation.
Must be that thirteen acres up on uh.
But I don't know where, but don't know.
You know, up on what? Where they were looking, the, the guy wanted to put in the AI. They have distribution.
Twenty, twenty-five acres.
Yeah.
The surveyor has been up there.
Okay. That, that would be my guess.
It's taped off the stuff, but.
Next item up on the agenda is public speak. Catherine, said through laughter tonight, got anything for us?
No, thank you. Um, I would like to, um, have John's permission to get hold of him sometime. Simply to discuss some of the changes that in the zoning. Regulation of the laws that were passed by the last legislature that got vetoed by the governor.
Oh, of course.
Get rid of John, I'd get the hold of John, so, uh.
Sure, it's, uh, I don't know if you, um, Catherine, if you've got a, a pen.
Yes.
But, uh, if you have, I don't know if you have my email, but it's just, just the title Planner, P L A and N E R at, um. Andover C T.
At Andover C T?
Uh, yeah, planner@andoverct.org.
Okay.
Yeah, happy to talk.
Yeah, because if it doesn't come up at the special session, I think it's going to be coming up, uh. In February again, so.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Planning and zoning section of the. Bar, so, of the Connecticut Bar Association.
Mm hmm.
Um, frequently have some information about it and opinions on it, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. We work closely with, with Jay Klein and, and those, those folks all the time.
All right, thank you.
Mm hmm.
Okay, next up is the approval of the minutes. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of our last regular meeting on September sixteenth. Okay, thank you, Scott. Any, uh, any comments on the minutes? Here is that, I'll call for a vote, Anne? Scott?
Aye.
I saw your lips move, Anne. I could read them.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you heard me.
Yeah, I, I got it. Okay, thank you. Patrick?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
And I voted aye as well. The minutes are approved five zero zero. Next regularly scheduled meeting, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, to be held as a hybrid meeting. Any last comments? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Patrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Listen, pass is five zero zero. Thank you very much, everybody.